Okay, good morning, good morning. If I could have, everybody please take your seats. Shhh. Everybody, please take your seats. It is Tuesday, February 21st. I want to welcome everyone to your City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscainos, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Carretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise as we salute our flag. I'm gonna ask, since we have a very special presentation today by Mr. Harris Dawson, I'm gonna ask you to lead us in our salute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody place their right hands over their hearts, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we had a but... Mr. Harris Dawson, I think we have an echo in here. Let's give our young, young people a round of applause for helping lead us today. And it is my understanding that we are visited today by third graders from Mr. Bonin's district and my district. The, the, what is it? Browerman Elementary School. And let's give them a round of applause. Let's quickly go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there's our quest to continue items 1E and 1I for two weeks to March 7th.
Okay, so without objection, that shall be the order.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed. 1F, as the lien has been rescinded. 1C, D, H, and L, as the properties have been determined to be owner-occupied, single-family dwellings and exempt. Additionally, the department recommends that the following lien amount be reduced due to receipt of partial payments. 1A to $526.42, and 1I to $3,365.03.
So without objection, that will be the order. Please continue.
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing.
Do they have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on all three items.
Okay, continue.
Items 4 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, I don't see any requests to speak on these items. So members, let's vote on items 4 through 13. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Krikorian.
On item number 1, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that 1B be continued until March 15th.
Okay, we'll take care of that. So let's continue that item. And the date again, Mr. Krikorian was?
March 15th, please.
I think what, do we have to go to that 22nd, Madam Clerk, on that because of our schedule?
Okay.
Correct, due to the recess.
So what, so what we'll do, it'll be March 22nd.
Thank you.
All right. So let's prepare to vote on the items 4 through 13. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 14 through 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on 14, 15, and 16.
Okay, that brings us where?
That takes council back to items called "special" or "presentations."
So, let's go to presentations. Mr. Harris Dawson, would you like to begin with yours? Okay, I'm gonna ask, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna sneak up there with you. I'm gonna ask Ms. Martinez if she'd come man the chair for a second.
I thought Ms. Martinez was gonna be with us.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask Mr. Englander. And we'll just keep going till we find somebody.
Yeah, we'll go roll with it. Roll with it, right, Mr. President? All right, so we have a short video that will begin our presentation that we can roll now. While we're getting in position, I'll ask our honorees to join us here at the lectern.
Okay, since you guys are so interested in my personal life, here it is. I'm 28, actually 29, because today's my birthday. I came from a great family. I have a college degree. I work in the nonprofit world because I like to give back. I've been with my boyfriend for five years, and I did this to my hair on purpose. So I hope that covers everything. Does anybody actually have any questions about "We Got Y'all"?
Why ain't you married?
I'm just not, right now.
My dad said, "Ain't nobody checking for bitter-ass black women anymore."
Day niece, that's detention. Apologize now.
Sorry.
That, that's okay. And tell your dad that black women aren't bitter. They're just tired of being expected to settle for less.
Her outfit's out of fleas.
Thank you so much, everybody. And thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, for allowing us to make this presentation today. As you know, February is African-American History Month. And one of the things that we want to make sure that we do during African-American History Month is point up the particular contribution of African-American women. I'm gonna say that again. I think we need to make a particular point to celebrate the contribution of African-American women during African-American History Month. And so today, we have a group of honorees that we're proud to present to you today that we, whose work we want to recognize. We have four students from City Year, a group that does something that I'm a big believer in, and that's get young people involved in volunteering, helping other people. We have Kiana Drake from Gompers Middle School. We have, yes, Kiana Drake, Gompers Middle School. Kira Tyler, who serves at 99th Street Elementary School in the 15th District. We've got Luopo Malakpa, who serves at Barack Obama Global Preparatory School. Mia Carrington, who serves at 107th Street Elementary School. And Marissa Jackson, who's a senior program manager. These young women go on our high school, middle school, and elementary school campuses and act as mentors, act as extra support for our teachers and our administrators to make sure young people have the kind of village that they need in order to learn, grow, and become the best Angelinos and Americans that they can be. So we're very proud to honor and celebrate them today, recognizing that a lot of their work inspires the character that you saw our other honoree play in the show "Insecure." So let's give them another big round of applause. Our next honoree, again, for African-American Women's Day is the one and only Issa Rae, the star of the HBO show "Insecure." Issa Rae is a homegirl, to use the common parlance. Growing up in Baldwin Hills and being a member of our community, going off to Stanford University, coming back and seeing what so many of us see as we're growing up, when we look at the television, when we look at movies, the depiction of our neighborhood and the depiction of our people is just not quite what it should be. We're often portrayed as being a little bit more violent and criminal than we are, a little bit more sexual and promiscuous than we really are, having a little less love of family and responsibility and industry than we do. And into that picture along comes Issa Rae. I like her a lot because she didn't ask for permission to have a show. She asked somebody who had a camera, and she wrote down a story, and she got somebody who had a building, I think her dad, who had a building and said, "This is gonna be the set." And she started shooting a show, and she put it on YouTube. And the show got more and more and more and more popular. And eventually, at a certain point, they ran out of resources to shoot the show. So they went on the internet and started a Kickstarter to raise money to complete the show. And they were able to raise enough resources to continue shooting the show. It became so successful that Hollywood noticed, and now we have "Insecure," one of the hottest shows on television today. She was nominated for a Golden Globe Award. And Mr. Krikorian, I'm very happy to say I noticed her because she shoots the show in LA, in the 8th District, in the 10th District, in our community. And so we're very proud of what she says about us, where she says it, and how she says it. We've got some comments from our colleagues. I'm happy to be joined by my colleague, Councilmember Nori Martinez.
Thank you very much. I'm a huge fan, so I hope I'm not that nervous. Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for this important presentation. It's important to recognize the contributions that black women have contributed to the city of Los Angeles, particularly during Black History Month. Colleagues, you often hear me say, "You can't be what you can't see." That's why it's so important for all of us to ensure that black women in our communities are recognized as positive role models for our young girls. One of the most important things that we tend to do here in council is in honor of some of the most amazing people that serve our city. But it's also important to recognize role models. Not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago, we recognized the first black female superintendent of ALU SD, Michelle King. And just this week, the city moved forward in having the first-ever black female battalion chief of the fire department, Chief Chris Larson. And this year, a movie called "Hidden Figures" about black women who were pioneers in the space expedition received critical and popular acclaim. You see, these are all incredible women. And Issa Rae is a trailblazer among black women here in our city. Not only is Issa an incredible actress, she's also a producer at HBO, who created the HBO series "Insecure." See, she does it all. She does, she does it all. She's, she has also shown great, great love for this city. But she not only is an actress, a director, a producer, but this woman has invested her time and effort in making sure that we are, you are premiering our city, that you're proud where you came from, that the girls that are watching you on TV see that, that they are, not only see themselves in you, but also have a sense of pride of being black women in this city. And I think that's very important. I want to thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for the opportunity to present to her, and thank her once again for not only shooting here in Los Angeles, but in doing so, you're not only highlighting our community, but you're creating hundreds of jobs for the working families here in Los Angeles. For that, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to meet you. Congratulations, and keep working hard.
Ladies and gentlemen, the leader of our council, Council President Herb Wesson.
Come on, you can give me a better mercy applause. You can give me a better mercy applause than that. At, at least act like you like me. I remember, as a young man, that my mother would say to me that if you can dream it, it can be done. And I think what Issa Rae has done is shed a light on that saying that my mother would say to me all the time, "If you can dream it, it can be done." Because this was her dream. And she refused not to achieve this dream. And Mr. Harris Dawson briefly touched on the challenges that she had to go through to make this a reality. But the beauty of her dream becoming a reality is that there are a lot of young people, black women, white women, minority women, minority boys, that now can see that if you can dream it, it can be done. I'm not sure that you started off wanting to be an inspiration, but you certainly have become inspiration. And it is just so important that our young people believe that they can reach up and touch the stars. And the only way they're gonna believe that is when they see other people achieve these things. Now, something else that's been referenced by my two dear friends and colleagues is that this "Insecure" series is filmed in Los Angeles. And I don't know about you, but isn't there something real special when you turn on the television and you say, "I know where that is"? Now, I am not going to admit when the scene was shown, and they had Maverick's Flats, that were one of the drinking establishments. I'm not gonna admit that I've ever been there. But it is so cool. It is so very cool to see the streets that we travel every day. And Maverick's Flats is a great place. Mr. Harris Dawson and I celebrated our victory party there when we were elected the last time. It is just so, so cool. And I, I think the other thing that I want to say to you, Ms. Rae, is that the show is real. You can touch it. You can feel it. And we've lived it. And you've just taken it, and you've put it on the screen. And, and I just love that type of thing. The conversations between you and, and your co-star. I love, when you guys talk, I look at my wife, and I say, "Do you think like that"? But it's just so special. And I think that during African-American Heritage Month or History Month, that it's important for us to, to bring folk from the community so that everybody can, can just see that they're just ordinary people that have been blessed to do an extraordinary thing or things. And so we welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall. We hope that you're back. And we also want you to know that we have a lot of people here, not mentioning any names, that could be extras.
They're all in this building.
Then... So, so call on us. Don't hesitate if you need us. We would love, we would love to have you bring your class or come down here and film something in City Hall. But anyway, with that said, ladies and gentlemen, let's give somebody a big round of applause who had a dream and made that dream into a reality. And that's Issa Rae. Give her a round of applause.
Mr. President, if you don't have speakers on the queue?
You're good to go.
Excellent. So I want to, as we bring Issa Rae to the stage, make sure we thank our sponsors for today. The Los Angeles African-American Women's Political Institute and Political Action Committee, the LA City Black Employees Association and Spectrum. Cable, we're also very proud this morning to be joined by two women. The daughter of our great mayor, for whom the tower is named, Mayor Tom Bradley. His daughter, Lorraine Bradley, is with us this morning. Let's give her a big round of applause. And I, I told Issa Rae this morning, she's a huge, huge star. I've been on City Council for about 19 months, and this person has been here. I think this is her third time only. My wife, Carrie Harris, is over there. Stand up, please. We want to thank her for being there. And again, thank you all for allowing us to have this presentation. And thank you for welcoming with me the one and only Issa Rae. Let's give her a big, big round of applause.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that, the wonderful introductions. I'm incredibly honored to be here. When I found out I was being honored, I really thought it was just gonna be my street. But to find out it's the city of Los Angeles, I'm just doubly honored. For me, it was just about creating a, a show centered around the positive experiences I've had in my, my city, the, the, the people I've met and who I know, who I've befriended over the years. And I've seen a lot of television shows and films that have inspired me in the past. But as Councilman was saying, they haven't presented us in the best light, and they're not necessarily current. And for me, it was about representing the richness. You know, it's, it's predominantly black, Latino, and Asian. It's a balance of affluence and poverty, but the two mesh. And it's, it's so beautiful to, to walk out and, and feel like your city is home. So I want to thank you all so much for, for recognizing that. And we will continue to shoot in the city. I actually have to go write season two as we speak. And, yes. So I'm very excited. So of course, I just want to give a special thanks to Councilwoman Harris Dawson, and to Solomon Rivera, and Kenneth Ashley Thomas, and the Los Angeles City Council, of course. And my mom is also here. She showed up. Thank you. I'm just incredibly honored. Thank you guys so, so much. Much appreciated.
Oh, thank you.
So on behalf of all the members of the Los Angeles City Council, the mayor, the city attorney, and all the elected officials, we are submitting to you this resolution and a beautiful bouquet of flowers. Let's get up here and take a big picture. One more big round of applause. Come on up to the ears. Let's press.
All right, Councilman Harris Dawson, you really changed these presentations now with flowers. So this is a challenge. So this is a challenge to any presentation that might be coming up in the very near future. The, the bar has been raised and fittingly so. So let's give them another big round of applause. Thank you so much.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Just do an acknowledgement.
Yes, Mr. Bonin.
Thanks. I know Mr. President Wesson recognized the students from Wilshire Boulevard Temple, Braverman School, a little bit earlier. I'm told that they were very excited to come here and see people that they had seen on television in person. So I thought maybe we could just put the camera on them for a second. Can we show the students? There we go.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That was a great shout out. I think they gave you an equal one back. Thank you so much. All right, and, and hopefully they're taking a tour of City Hall? Particularly since we're about to start public comment? Yeah, all right, good. Excellent. All right. All right, with, with that, we'll go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and open it up for Eric Previn, multiple speaker cards. Mr. Eric Previn on items one, two, three, 14, 15 and 16. Just on those items, Mr. Previn? One, two, three, 14, 15 and 16.
Yes, hello, it is Eric Previn from CD2, and I am running for the office of mayor of Los Angeles. There's a lot of noise in the room. Is that okay? Do you want me to just continue?
I can hear you fine, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about the rest of the.
Keep going on your items one. Please stick to the agenda items.
Sure, CD 10. This is a proposal for $180,000 on item 16 to appropriate $180,000 for the great Lemert Park. Unfortunately, at the charter of Lemert Park, when it was pressed into service, there was a kind of an understanding that they would never close the park and that they would never fence in the park. This is sadly, it's some redevelopment money being shuffled around to put a fence around Lemert Park. So that is unfortunate. I don't know, maybe, maybe the neighbors have been clamoring for such a fence. I don't think so. I've heard people say, "No, no closing, no fencing", but not anymore. Item number, I guess, 14 is CD4 David Rue in North Coldwater. It's the REAP program. They're, they're putting back into service because somebody complied with his, with his wishes. Rue obviously is a complicated figure. And on the last meeting on Friday, item 17-0139 was improperly amended without giving the public an opportunity to comment. So I'd ask them to re-agendize that appropriately. Item number 15, we don't see very often a council member from the 9th district not get the Times endorsement, but that's what happened today. It could be because we're spending $1.7 million on what looks to be abatement and demolition. That is a huge number for abatement and demolition. If we were going to be building something for that at that site, which is in his district, that would be one thing. But maybe this is why when we call things, the Walgreens space and affordable housing project, of course, we want that to get there, but it's a lot of money. And I'd, I'd like to know how that's going to be specifically earmarked. And item number one is your traditional lien item. And it's so nice to see Harris Dawson doing the right thing and honoring organic folks from the community who have done well. It is not as nice to see during an off-election cycle to have him do five pernicious liens against residents of CD8, the poorest of all the districts. And it's, it's, it's brave of Bloomingfield with no opposition to throw down three, or I believe, no, it's not three. He has several. And CD7, where there is no representative, once again, a vacant seat, Council President Wesson unabashedly goes after Angelenos in this environment. It was nice to see both Wesson and Harris Dawson ease off a little by, by delaying them or cutting the fines. It's unfortunate that we have to be in this space continually, every single week, every single day, shamefully going after Angelenos. It's not fair and it's not appropriate. Item number six is the Brentwood School. Now, I don't understand why if we're having a big project like that.
Mr. President, item six is not for public comment. Yeah, we already had public comment on that. So, okay, so now you've got your one minute for general public comment.
Well, for general public comment, I would simply say that the Ethics Commission has sort of jumped the shark. There'll be a meeting later today, and I would encourage candidates and others to show up. They are going after a mayoral candidate named Emmanuel Plaites, who, you know, he raised several hundred thousand dollars, almost 600 with some public money. And he was not an experienced candidate, so didn't, you know, keep all the paperwork, but did nothing really wrong at all. They went after him for a fine of $76,000, Mr. Sadio. You could laugh during your non-endorsement from the Times as well. It's actually down to 36,000. They gave him a 50% discount. But by, by contrast, the L.A. Times wrote an article, and Emily is a good writer, about Mr. Ek, a lobbyist, who was fined $11,000 minus the 6,500 you all gave him back. So he got a $3,500 fine for throwing himself a birthday party at Perch, which is a pricey place downtown. It's very nice, actually, I recommend it. But, but this is disgusting. You are using the Ethics Commission, as I wrote last week, the Ministry of Truth. It's inappropriate. And by the way, Mayor Garcetti ought to not approve the all.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is, Lorna Bishop? Is Lorna still here? No longer here? Okay, we'll note your, your request to speak. John Walsh? John, items one, two, three, 14, 15 and 16.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or blogging at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. And number one, again, you're doing an excellent job on Building and Safety. I'm not one of those kinds of shit, I'm a bunch of quacks. No, no, no. You know those white guys. That's not me. Number 13, 14, 15 and 16. This is number 14. This concerns rent escrow. Again, you do a good job on rent. 15, abatement, existing buildings as part of the first Swanson and Walgreens Affordable Housing Project. We're watching that very carefully. And number 16, the construction of a fence surrounding Lemert Park. Well, you should have put a fence in there before because that's gang territory. And things are getting even worse and worse in gang territory. I'd like to go to my one minute of public comment, general public comment. Vote yes on S, end the romance between City Hall and big developers. We're very upset about the Times supporting Curran, not supporting Curran Price. The editor of the Times has skin that is as black as you, but he doesn't, he claims, Davan Maharaj claims, he is not a black man and he hates all black people. Ask anyone who works at the Times and they will tell you what a vile, vomitous character he is with his mix of Indian continent and black blood. He is a black man, and that's why he hates Mr. Curran Price. Yes on S, yes on S, yes on S. We're going to win this and we're going to send all the developers. And did you see in the, in the paper? The worst traffic in the world, Enric says L.A., worst traffic in the world.
Thank you very much. Okay, Daniel Gus? Dan? He just wrote Dan. I'm assuming it's a guy. Mr. Gus? Yeah.
Council members, good morning. Daniel Gus, I have the number one most-read article on City Watch this morning. I'll be talking about that in a minute. I'm going to start backwards with item number 16. It says $180,000 for the completion of a fence. Where are you buying this fence where you have an incomplete fence that you need to finish it for an additional $180,000? I suggest you start looking at your supplier and your labor. $180,000 not to, for a fence, but to complete a fence. It's not a bad thing to have. I just wonder how the hell a portion of a fence is costing $180,000. Item number 15. All of a sudden, Mr. Price, right after the Times did not endorse him, all of a sudden, we're seeing green space in CD9. Do you see, people of CD9, how this works? The new ninth is just as lousy represented in City Hall as the old ninth. All of a sudden, all of a sudden, we have a green space issue in CD9 right after the Times endorses not Mr. Price, but Jorge Nunez. I wonder why it took all this time to get a green space item on a city council agenda in Council District 9 just two weeks before the election? How does that work? Item number 14 is interesting because it connects to item number one also, of course. It's interesting. All of a sudden, we don't have rent escrow account issues for CD1 or CD9. All of a sudden, we don't have rent escrow account on CD9 and CD1? What happened with CD9 and CD1? The L.A. Times is calling for a change of representation in CD9. I guess Jorge Nunez is who the Times wants. So all of a sudden, no REAP in CD9. And in CD1, the L.A. Times doesn't want Gil Sadio, they want Joe Bray Ali. So all of a sudden, when the Times is calling for change, the city council agenda reflects, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to take money from these people. The L.A. Times is now dictating your policy. They're calling for new representation instead of Gil Sadio in CD1. So we have no REAP in CD1. They're calling for new representation in Mr. Price's new ninth, which is just as bad as the old ninth. It's un-freaking-believable. I will go into my one minute now, please. Council members, I have the number one most-read article on City Watch L.A. this morning about the fatal tree collapse in Sherman Oaks on Friday, in which a tree that you knew should have been removed, collapsed, took down power lines and electrocuted a man. This happened on Mr. Garcetti's watch. This happened on Mr. Rue's watch. Instead of having a few hundred thousand dollars of a settlement, you're going to have a multi-million dollar wrongful death settlement. There is evidence, as I point out in my article, the city, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Rue had warning that this tree was going to kill somebody, and it did kill somebody, a 55-year-old man. And God forbid if he had children or children of college age. Ladies and gentlemen of, of Los Angeles, the L.A. Times did not endorse Gil Sadio for CD1. They endorsed Joe Bray Ali, a community activist, and Mr. Price, whose life is falling apart, you're going to find out very soon. The L.A. Times wants somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Herman?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, yes.
You know, before, before we recognize or call on the next speaker, I'd like to take a moment. Are we on? Okay.
Excuse me while you're doing that. Mr. Herman, please have a seat. We'll call you right back up in a moment.
I would like to take a moment and recognize that we have some very special visitors with us today from Council District 7. It's called Selmar, Selmar on the Move Riders Club. Let's give them a round of applause. Stand up.
Stand up, be recognized. There we go.
Now, they, they do a lot of work helping, assisting seniors in understanding how the public transportation system works. But we also have a, it's a special day, I'm told, for a special person. We have Vi Martinez. It's your birthday, Vi Martinez. Where is, where's Vi? Raise your hand. She's 39 years young. Give her a round of applause. Welcome to City Hall.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Herman, come, come on up. You've got item one, 14, 15 and 16.
So have you not all heard that we still have unconstitutional liens? Is it unconstitutional to wave your hands and say, "I protest against the lien"? Is it unconstitutional to say, "I don't agree"? Well, there's something wrong with these liens. There's only two pages of liens in here, and they should all be forgiven. All should be forgiven because you did not send a certified registered letter to each individual. And I here demand a receipt and a corrective order, Mr. City Attorney, for the record, on all items of the liens.
Please not yell. We're going to ask.
I'm not yelling, sir.
Keep the voice down. Or we're going to, we'll cut your mic then.
Let me stand back and see the beauty of the liens. Once again, if we continue to allow the lien process by the Department of Building and Safety, by the African-American man that comes in here and delegates, what's going to happen to these people when they lose their homes? The elderly specifically. The elderly are on a fixed budget. They are on a fixed budget, and they shake their heads because he agrees that these liens put harm mentally and physically to their ability to understand why the fuck we got liens?
Okay, so you're, I already warned you about yelling. So your time, you forfeit your time. You forfeit your time. We've warned you already. You can't yell into the microphone. Please, please hold this time. Shut off the mic. You cannot yell into the microphone because we have an interpreter amplifying your voice as you were yelling. I've already, I've already warned you. That'll be your final warning. All right, please. And it's not for me. We've got a translator wearing headsets. Okay? Thank you.
To discuss the issues of why the Dark Knight Batman dislikes liens is because they're unconstitutional. Batman wants you to forgive all liens and to deny Building and Safety for saying that people have ISOs on their property. Why should you go and challenge people who are having a hardship in a time like this? Not even the 45th president has any discontent or contemptuous views like yourself, Mr. Chair and the City Attorney. So I say to the public, let us wave our hands and forgive all those liens because we have the. the ability to address real issues in our city, not like Eric Garcetti, who can't forgive us for our liens. So if you're going to vote, vote no on the liens. Vote no on every lien on this agenda, because Eric Garcetti doesn't care about your property or the liens that the City of Building and Safety place upon you. I wave back my six minutes, Madam Chair.
Okay, one minute for general public comment.
So as you all may know, there's true feelings in City Hall today, but the children knew that under the mask, under the hood, under my garment, that there is a true identity of life and liberty and justice for all. The Dark Knight demands, demands-
All right, we, we've asked that you not yell. You're now yelling again. Keep it down.
... citizens under the Ralph M. Brown Act 54950, and bring back Rule 93 so they can see the true Batman in his action at City Hall, and not the contemptuous Mr. Kukorin who turns his chair away from me, let alone Busciano, Wilmington, and Imperial. I tried to break down those smoke shops, Joe Blow smoke shops, but no, he poisons the community of Watts because Joe Busciano hates niggers, and I'm one of those niggers. So I demand-
Thank you very much.
... a cure and correct immediately.
All right. Thank you. Time is up. Thank you very much. All right. And Mr. Spindler, we're going to go ahead, we'll call you up now. Remind those folks in the audience not to clap out loud and make noises, otherwise it's disrupting the meeting. We'll have to ask you to leave.
And, Mr. President?
Yes.
As the speaker moves forward, there are requests to continue items 1J, LP, and Q for two weeks to March 7, and 1N for 30 days to March 22.
Great, thank you very much. That'll be the order without objection. So now we'll go ahead and take your comments, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, Mr. Dabledawg, yes.
You're on items 1, 3, 14, 15, and 16.
Yes, number one, these dirty fucking liens. We do not like these liens. That's why we need to get rid of liens. Liens are the cause of administrative terrorists at the Building and Safety Committee. My friend here and I are attempting to get the UN to classify LA Building and Safety as a terrorist organization. Yes, they terrorized CD7 so many times. There's a lien on CD7. No, there's two. But Herbie promised no more liens on CD7 until after the election. Now we have a third one, West Bromwich Street, for a lot of money. Mr. Council President, cancel all liens in CD number 7. For those of you that don't speak English, that's number 7. And then CD 2, the goat. CD 2, yes, there's a big shady glade avenue lien. We do not want this. Nuri, Shima Nuri, she has a lien. And then Busciano has a lien. Who doesn't have a lien? Rue. Yes, David Rue is doing a good job. Thank you. So now, we have somebody building a fucking wall. Is it Trump? No. Is it the Attorney General Sessions? No. No! In CD 10, we're building a wall. Mr. President, tear down that wall. Yes, we do not want the wall. Get the wall around Lamarck Park out. Let people walk to the park. Stop gentrifying Lamarck Park. Let the homeless breathe. Let the homeless live in Lamarck Park. It is the will of God for parks to be used by homeless people like in CD1. They use the homeless park at MacArthur Park. It's a beautiful park filled with tents, people living on the streets and defecating in the lake. It's so wonderful. Yes, I was there Saturday. So, we must tear down the wall. Tear down the wall in Lamarck Park. Stop Donald Trump's wall. Then we have to start the Lamarck Park wall. But if you support the Lamarck Park wall, you must support Donald Trump's border fence. So, do we have a fence or no fence? Are we going to let everyone in from Mexico? Then everybody gets in Lamarck Park, because once you make the journey from Mexico to Los Angeles, you get a tent, and where do you sleep?
I believe we've strayed off topic, Mr. President.
Lamarck Park.
All right, let's go ahead. We'll start your one minute for general public comment.
Lamarck Park.
Go ahead and start his one minute for general public comment. There you go.
So, LA Times, busted CD9.
We're going to, we're going to ask you not to yell into the mic too, or we'll-
CD9.
So, Wayne.
The challenger, Jorge Nuneo, has been endorsed. Now, CD1, Ali has been endorsed. CD5, yes, Corretts out. Anybody but Corretts. Anybody but Price. Anybody but Sadio. Yes, LA Times, when you do a great job, we tell you, you're doing a great job, and you're doing a great job. Also, 86-year-old Richard Reardon, who supports Measure S, just got married for the fifth time. 86-years-old to a woman half his age. Yeah! That guy is awesome. Yes on Measure S.
All right, so let's go ahead, and we've got a number of items we can vote on, and those are items 2, 3, 14, 15, and 16, colleagues. 2, 3, 14, 15, and 16. So we go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. Great, thank you very much. Those items are approved. Let's go ahead and go into the remaining cards now. Remy Peregrino? Peregrino? Remy? Remy? Dennis? Is Dennis still here? No? Rosley? I think a lot of these folks were here earlier and left. Doug Carstens? Doug Carstens? David Wright? Those were just general public comments. So, okay, we'll go ahead and file those cards. Thank you very much. Oh, we have one.
Hi, I'm here because I'm being most severely destroyed, physically destroyed, by the management of the building that I live in, because it's a rent-controlled building, and they do every type of destruction to totally destroy me, to steal my apartment. One of the things they did is they flushed sulfuric acid from outside, a great amount of sulfuric acid, and my insides are totally destroyed. My whole body is destroyed. They made the house full of asbestos, full of lead. They're notorious for being corrupt, and nobody does anything. I've been here a few weeks ago, a total waste of time. Nobody does anything. They sent me to the Council Department in my area, which is a total waste of time. So I would like to know why I don't get help, because what they're doing is totally criminal, and if you allow it to go on, it's like murder. So I'd like to know where I could get help.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. All right, the next... Dennis? Is Dennis Moss here? Mario Gonzalez? Mario's no longer here either. Okay. We'll go ahead and note those cards. All right, is there anybody here that's filled out a card that didn't speak, that wanted to speak? I want to make sure the system's working. No? Okay. So that does conclude all the cards then, gave everybody an opportunity. And, um, Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Item 1 for a vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 1. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those will be posted and referred. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, if we can all please rise for adjourning motions. Ask everybody in council to please rise for adjourning motion. All right. Looking to my left? Seeing none. To my right? I'm seeing, well, we've got one. Mr. Kukorin.
Very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd ask that the council adjourn this meeting in memory of Aneshia Sophia Abramian, who passed away on January 31 at the age of 32. Aneshia was born in Iran and immigrated to this country and was a resident of Sunland for much of her life. She was a, had a lifelong passion for dance, and at the age of four, she started her ballet and jazz training and went on to have a successful career in dance. She was training eventually at the world-famous Millennium Dance Complex in North Hollywood, and was known for winning statewide competitions. In high school, she joined competitive cheerleading and eventually became co-captain of the USC Song Girls, and then went on to dance for the Los Angeles Clippers dance team as well. When she concluded her work as a, as a professional dancer, she taught, and she went on to work as a mental health professional in South Los Angeles, helping young people. When she was diagnosed with cervical cancer, Aneshia joined a group called Dancers Against Cancer, and brought great inspiration to many other young women who were facing this horrible battle. And her loss was, she thought, you know, she was in remission, and she thought she had won that battle, but unfortunately, she succumbed at the young age of 32. But in that short life, she brought great joy and great inspiration to, to many, and she will be very much missed by her family and her friends and her fans.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Officer Keith Wayne Boyer, 27-year veteran of the Whittier Police Department, badge number 249. Boyer was hired by the department in 1999 as a dispatcher, a jail officer, and before that, as a reserve officer, before becoming a full-time officer in 1990. He passed away while responding to a traffic collision where he and his partner were ambushed, shot by a known gang member who was recently paroled from prison. Officer Boyer was known and respected for his many years of experience, and younger officers and sergeants alike looked to him for advice and guidance. Besides serving on the Whittier Police Department, Boyer was also a school resource officer for Whittier's La Sierra High School, where Boyer graduated in 1981. In his spare time, Officer Boyer would drive to Temecula, where he was a classic rock tribute, in a classic rock tribute band called Mrs. Jones Revenge, and played for local charities and nonprofit organizations to help them have fundraisers, and, and truly loved all his band members. He was the same man behind a drum set as he was in a uniform, fun and full of life. Radar Love by Golden Earrings was one of Boyer's favorite songs to play, and over the last several years, Boyer was the go-to officer in the field as a beat officer. Officer Keith Boyer represented the best of the best and was a legendary law enforcement officer. He was very humble and always smiling, positive, energetic, and diligent. He gave his heart and soul to the Whittier Police Department and to his entire community. Keith Boyer served with distinction and had recently begun to talk about retirement in order to spend more time with his family. He was a true hero and will be missed by many. Boyer survived by his parents, his two sons, Josh and Joey, his daughter Ashley and daughter-in-law Megan, his son-in-law Mike, and many, many grandchildren. A prayer vigil was held yesterday for Officer Boyer in front of the Whittier Police Department, and the formal memorial service still to be determined. May he, and his family, just, heart goes out to the family, and may he rest in peace. Thank you very much, colleagues. That concludes this council meeting. We are adjourned. Be safe.
And really, for, I think, anybody that's interested in doing this, not in Los Angeles, but any other place, it's about how are you going to make connections? What connections do you need to make? Who do you need to meet with? What's the collaborative process so that you can say, this is the idea, this is the point on the horizon? I don't know how we're going to get there, but this is something that's good for kids, so let's figure it out.
Okay. So we've got the person. We've got the space, we've got the willing principle.